Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, September 8th. And I'm Counselor Wainwright. I'm chairing the meeting tonight. In the council chamber with me is Mayor McNeil Smith and Counselor Garnett. And joining us on Zoom, or via Zoom, is Counselor O'Keefe, Counselor Fallett, Counselor Duncan, and Counselor Rintul. So, welcome, everyone. I'd like to start off by calling the meeting to order and acknowledging that this meeting's being held on the territory of the Wasanich Nation. Committee, you have the agenda in front of you. Are there any additions or amendments?
I move the agenda as presented. Second.
Okay, so that's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Anyone opposed? That's carried unanimously. Next item is approval of minutes. We have the minutes of the regular Committee of the Whole of August 10th.
I'll move the minutes be approved. Second.
Okay, so that is moved and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Everyone's in favor, so that's carried. Next, we'll move on to presentations, and we have a presentation on the CRD Arts and Culture Program. We've got, the presentation is by Counselor Love Day, who's the Chair of the CRD Arts Committee. And you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I'm just gonna share my screen here. All right, I'm just confirming that you can see my screen now?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Thank you very much. As stated, my name is Jeremy Love Day. I am City of Victoria councillor and the Chair of the CRD Arts Commission. And I want to thank Mayor and Council for inviting me here today to hear about the CRD Arts and Culture Support Service, our strategic plan, and the grants that we are offering. I want to also acknowledge that we're on the traditional, this meeting's taking place on the traditional territory of the Wasanich Peoples, and that I'm currently zooming in from the homeland of the Songhees and Esquimalt Nations, the Lakonian People. I'm hoping that you've all received a copy of the brochure describing our programs, as well as the progress report, which shares the impact of our strategic plan and its implementation to date. And a little history, some of you will be aware that the CRD Arts and Culture Support Service has been operating since 2001. And the goal is for, to provide for the giving of assistance for the purposes of benefiting the community, meaning that we support arts and culture regionally through a number of granting programs, which I'll tell you a bit about later. And in 2001, at that point, there was four municipalities in the region that participated. And when it became, and that's how many participated, when it became a regional, a subregional service. Since then, it has grown to have nine participating jurisdictions, and that's where we're at right now. And those jurisdictions, local governments participate at two levels. So, the Group One is Victoria, Sanich, Oak Bay, Esquimalt, and View Royal, and they contribute at the full rate to the service. And then there is Group Two, which is Highlands, Machosen, Suk, and Sanich Gulf Islands, and they contribute at the Group Two level, which is 30% of the Group One level. And you look, here is a brief overview of our budget and the impact we have. The CRD Arts Commission distributed in 2019 $2.4 million, including 94 grants. And I think importantly, 23% of those were new grantees, so new organizations receiving funds. And you can see the breakdown there. One new thing that some of you may not be aware of is that we're now offering multi-year operating grants, which does provide additional predictability for organizations that are at the operating grant level. As you know, we are part of a creative region, and I know that Sydney is a creative place, and there's many arts and arts organizations in Sydney, and the same is true for the region as a whole. The total GDP of culture in B.C. is $7.9 billion, of which the CRD accounts for 8.6%. And I think it's important to note that our region is home to some of the highest concentration of artists in Canada, especially when compared to other communities our size. And in that, many of those artists live in Sydney, and that there's also arts organizations that would be eligible for funding that are in Sydney if Sydney was a participating jurisdiction. So, a little bit about Sydney participation. Sydney is a former participant, and there are organizations that used to receive funding that would no longer be eligible, as Sydney's no longer a participant. In joining the art service, there's many benefits. I'll go into the grants in a second. But on a, on a other note, is supporting the regional arts ecosystem, which I think you'll know that many of your residents participate in, both as audience members, volunteers, and as artists who make their living through the arts. So, in terms of our grant programs, the biggest one is the operating grants, and that goes to organizations that have strong structure and capacity to maintain ongoing annual operations. And these arts organizations are significant arts institutions that are contributing to the cultural capital of our region. And they are a key part of our healthy economy. And for every $1 that the CRD invests in arts and culture grants, those organizations are able to leverage that for another $11.55, which they usually get from sponsorships, other grants, or ticket sales revenues. Other grant programs we have is project grants, which are one-time projects, sort series, that might be a festival, or a series of theater, or dance. We have idea grants, and this is for organizations that are non arts organizations. So, it could be a seniors group, or a community group, or health organization that want to put on an arts event to help, to support their community in some way. We also have the equity grant, which seek to remove barriers that are systemic in nature, so that organizations that may have previously been excluded from receiving funds have this stream of funding to apply for. And incubator grants, which helps support organizations as they create new ways of operating and innovate within themselves, as they strive for excellence, both in terms of artistry and in terms of their operations. And you may be aware of this, which is the Landmark's Public Art website. If not, I encourage you to check it out. And right now, there's 167 artworks added, and I know there's public art in Sydney, so we'd love to add Sydney's art on there as well. We were, one of the things we was asked to present about was the strategic plan, and our current strategic plan was just updated this past year. I think it's been distributed to you. Our main goal remains to support, promote, and celebrate the arts, and we're doing that through these five goals that you can see now. Increase community awareness, increase participation in the service, make access to funding more equitable, sustaining creativity, and responding to the granting needs of the organizations that we serve and that we support. You can see the impact and of the money that goes out to the grant recipients. So, you'll see that in 2019, organizations the CRD Arts Commission funded produced 3,357 events, created 3,564 jobs, convened 644,000 attendees, and had over 5,395 volunteers. And if you want to learn more about that, you can check out the progress report that has much more details on those types of impacts than I have to share today. Benefits of supporting the arts more generally, improved quality of life and well-being, activities for citizens and visitors, employment and volunteer opportunities, local economic development profile for our region, and enhancing our community identity. Overall, I think it's clear that our region is better off when we together invest in arts and culture. This year has been a tough time for arts and culture with COVID-19, as it has been challenging for many other sectors. Arts have been particularly hit hard. And the CRD Arts Commission has been able to pivot and continue to support these arts organizations, as they provide comfort for many people in our communities during these uncertain and challenging times, as well as continuing to generate local economic development. Through the five funding programs and the public art inventory we administer, it expands opportunities for all residents participating in the arts. And based on the data contained in the 2019 progress report that you have, we know that our region is better off when we work together to invest in these organizations. And I'm proud to say that the Arts Commission is providing a service that benefits both residents and arts audiences across the region. And we do hope that Sydney will consider participating again in the arts, CRD Arts and Culture Support Service. We would love to continue to work with you to make our region even more interesting, vibrant, and economically better off through the arts. So, thank you very much for having me today. And I'm here as well as James Lamb, who is the manager of the Arts and Culture Support Service for the CRD, if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from committee? And, oh, thank you. I was gonna say, for those of you on Zoom, I was only able to see a couple of portraits. I see Counselor Fallett, and then Counselor O'Keefe. So, Counselor Fallett?
Thank you very much, Chair Wainwright. Thank you very much, Mr. Love Day, for your presentation this evening. And welcome to you and Mr. Lamb to our council meeting. It's nice to see both of you. It's been a while, so it's great. And I really did like the information that you've provided us. I think CRD Arts has come quite a way since I last sat at the table, and the information's great. I've got a couple of questions. One of the things that I remember hearing from arts groups in the Sydney region on the peninsula is the difficulty between the smaller arts groups and, let's say, the more amateur groups competing in the grant writing process with the professional groups that are more in the core center, and they feel a disadvantage. And sometimes they simply don't put in their applications because it is a tedious process, it is a difficult. Could you address that at all?
I'm happy to speak to that, Jeremy, if you like. I will say that it is a disconnect for large and small organizations, particularly when it comes to paper-based applications. Paper-based applications require some degree of understanding your own organization, so that you can articulate that to a set of adjudicators. That said, I think the staff here at the Arts Office are a bit unusual in terms of public sector funders. We're totally open to working with organizations in terms of answering questions about their applications. I think maybe just as many organizations in Sydney, of course, that we previously were a member and who, as organizations that we funded, would attest to the helpfulness of staff here in terms of helping them get their applications, and at least I hope they would. We're always here to assist with any questions. That said, we do also have a set of community-based adjudicators in the Arts Advisory Council, who are well-versed with the difference between professional and community-based organizations. And I think if we, honestly, I think if we looked at the difference in funding levels, I think we'd see that there's pretty good representation between the community-based organizations, the ones that are strictly volunteer-based versus the professional ones. That's not to say that the large institutions, you know, they have more infrastructure there, they're sort of like the bedrock of the community. They do, for sure, get a larger percentage of the funding. This is one of the reasons we've introduced the incubator fund to help emerging organizations, as well as the equity fund to help those organizations who experience barriers that are systemic, you know, they don't understand how to write, they don't understand how to apply. That said, we do depend on organizations to be not-for-profits, so they do need to have a little bit of infrastructure and knowledge about why they exist. And I think as long as they can articulate that clearly, then they probably have as good a shot as any organization, regardless of scale.
Okay, thank you. If I can, Chair Wainwright?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, reading through the material, there obviously is a real desire for the arts to expand their funding, expand their funding base, and obviously to get all the region's municipalities on board. There's also on page seven of the Support, Promote, and Celebrate, there's a section here called Risk Register. And so, my thought is, if, the more municipalities you get in, obviously, there's going to be a greater draw on the available funds. If you're already speaking now to perhaps the funds not always being able to meet the demand, is that a real situation? And are we going to be looking at, if we were to rejoin the CRD, that the cost will, or the cost to us as a municipality will be going up significantly?
I guess what I can say is that the annual budget for the Arts and Culture Service is something that is decided on by the Arts Commission, which Sydney, of course, would have representation of if they joined. So, there isn't, there isn't like an endless ceiling to the funding. It's an approved funding level that you would have participation in deciding. Of course, that also has to be approved by the CRD Board in the global budget. It's always an issue. There's never enough money to meet the request, the level of request. And so, the key statement that Jeremy has mentioned earlier is that the role of the bylaw says that the, we are required to provide a benefit, determine the benefit to the community. And so, that's the role of the assessors. They look at the applications, they look at geographical distribution, they look at the types of organizations that apply, and they make a decision that hopefully is supported and accountable through transparent processes for organizations to make a case for why they are important to be funded. And again, I think if you look at the range of organizations that are funded, it's everything from volunteer-run to big organizations. And I think by and large, our adjudicators make very good decisions that are very supportable, and I hope would be supportable by Sydney Council as well.
Thank you very much, James. I'll leave my questions for the time being. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Counselor O'Keefe?
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy, and James, for being here. I appreciate the information you sent, the pamphlet, the stuff about your strategic plan and the progress report. I'm new to council and relatively new to understanding arts and culture, so I appreciated that information. I did have some questions arising from that. One is, if you can help me understand a little bit better about how the funding works. So, I understand that the funding comes from a levy from each of the participating municipalities. And I wonder if you could tell me, so is that levy something that we would be adding in to our tax bill? And, or is that something that is assessed as a percentage of tax revenue? Or is it based on the number of people, you know, like a set amount per head, per population? If you could give me a bit more info on that?
Once the budget is set and approved, then there's an apportionment formula contained in the bylaw. That apportionment is based 50% on population, according to StatsCan and CRD population data, and then 50% based on hospital district assessments, which is the standard assessment that the CRD uses for most services. So, it would be your share of the larger approved budget based on your population and your assessment. So, for example, Sanich, which is one of the largest populations, higher assessments, it's a little over $1 million in, as a full participant. Victoria is around $900,000. These Group Two-level participants, of course, are proportionally much smaller, and it's only 30% of their full level. If I could give you an example, a rough ballpark of what it would cost Sydney if they were, became a Group Two, this is just based on the 2016, and extrapolating a little bit for cost of living and changes in assessment. But it would probably be in the neighborhood of about $40,000, $42,000 as a Group Two participant.
Okay. And the other thing I couldn't find in here, and I couldn't find on the website, was financial statements for the budget for the CRD. So, what's, I'm just trying to get a sense of what the annual budget is, and trying to get a sense of, out of that budget, what percent of funds gets issued in grants?
Yeah, the overall budget is, I should have that document in front of me. The overall admin budget, there's three staff people, full-time staff people, is a little over $300 and something thousand. I think Jeremy has mentioned that the overall grant budget is, including everything, is a little bit more than 2.4 million. So, it's about 12% administrative costs.
Okay, great. Thanks. And are you, is the Arts Council or Commission, are they eligible for any provincial grant programs? Do we, do we get anything through the province for arts?
No, we're basically a municipal government funding agency, and so, yeah, we would not be eligible for that type of support.
Right. Okay. And just one other question. I noticed some press releases this past year for announcing grants in February and April and July. And so, I was just, have questions about the process. So, are they, are the grants then offered throughout the year, or just certain times of year? Is there a particular time that applicants have to apply by, or is it, you know, that they can apply throughout the year?
There are set deadlines for each of the programs. The operating grant program, the largest, has an annual deadline in September. As a matter of fact, the deadline is two days from now. We have two project grant deadlines. Those are for arts organizations. Generally, it's the next biggest program. And then the incubator equity and idea grant programs all have a single deadline, typically towards the end of March or early April.
Right.
So, most of, most of the smaller programs in the first half of the year, and then operating in the fall.
Okay, that's great. Good. Thanks very much for that.
Welcome.
Counselor Rintul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for the presentation, Counselor Love Day, and James, for the information you've provided. I certainly see value in a body that can provide equity and fairness in the granting process. I think it's, it's very important that, you know, professionals have a role in granting funds. And I'm appreciative of that process. I am, as my previous speaker, Counselor O'Keefe, new to council, I've had some exposure to this process previously in our community. However, and I guess what I'd like from your perspective, James, is why is it that there are no peninsula municipalities participating currently? And in that, you know, that's not necessarily new, what has the organization done to address the concerns of those three municipalities on the peninsula, with an eye to Sydney in particular? What's changed? With aside from the fact that, I know it was referenced, you now have multi-year operating grants. But I guess what's changed to address the concerns of the peninsula, and in particular, Sydney?
Honestly, the decision to join the service is largely a political one. There may be councillors around your table, in the current council, who have a memory of, I know Barbara, of course, was on the Arts Commission at one time. So, she might be able to better address why Sydney decided to withdraw from Group Two participation. Other than that, because it's a political decision, we, I'll leave the political comments to Jeremy. But I will say that perhaps what has changed since you withdrew was the expansion of, you know, we have this, we have had an extensive core staff of 2.8 FTEs up until three years ago. We now have an extensive staff of 2.8 FTEs. But one of the benefits of that, and our strategic plan back in 2016, was that we responded to the community needs for the equity fund, as we've described, the incubator, we introduced the, reintroduced the idea grant program. So, I think the value for Sydney and for maybe other jurisdictions who aren't participating is, I think, the prospect of better participation, broader participation, more access to the community. Those are contained in the five goals that Jeremy outlined as part of our strategic plan. I think those are the changes that you're seeing in the service over the last four years, is having a very focused strategic plan, five very clear goals with achievable objectives. And the CRD and the Arts Commission seeing the value in adequately resourcing those through our community outreach person. And I think that's what we're seeing in a number of you who have commented on, on the changes, positive changes that you've seen through the documents we've distributed.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm not particularly interested in getting into the political reasons why any council may have determined to participate or not. I wanted to see what lessons had been learned, you know, from the withdrawal, for example, from the likes of Sydney. And I appreciate your comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, can I comment briefly on that as well?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much for the question. I don't know, I guess one point is that I, this outreach to Sydney is also going on to your neighboring municipalities on the peninsula. And I'm hopeful to be presenting to them sometime before their budgeting process, and I hope that they'll consider joining as well. In my, I've been on the Arts Commission for four, five years now, and I've seen a lot of change myself. And I've seen that reflected in some of the municipalities that have chosen to join in, over the last couple of years. For example, Suk is now a member, and they have arts organizations that are now receiving funds that previously were unable to apply, let alone receive them. And I know that that's making an impact for a lot of, for the, for some of those arts organizations. Same with the Southern Gulf Islands decided to join. And they're seeing the benefit from it as well, with some of their festivals and events receiving funding over the last two years. And I do think the incubator grant is an important one, because what that is, does, is it's aimed at enhancing the sustainability and resiliency of arts organizations by funding short-term staffing, mentoring, workspace, training, or other resources that assist in the acceleration of organizational development. And so, when there was brought up earlier about smaller organizations maybe having trouble with the granting process, this funding could also help with that organizational development. And that funding wasn't available in the past. So, that is a new grant stream as well, that I think responds to some of the things that the Arts Commission had heard from smaller jurisdictions and emerging arts organizations in other participating municipalities.
Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Counselor and Commission Chair Love Day, and CRD Manager James Lamb, for your, for your presentation and for attending and taking our questions this evening. Very impressed with the, with the material provided to us, both the strategic plan, as you indicated, was updated earlier this year, and the progress report for 2019. CRD, as you mentioned, CRD Arts and Culture Support Service established in 2001, now in its 19th year. I was proud to, I was proud to, and Sydney joined in 2009, I was proud to be on Sydney Council in 2009 when Sydney joined that year and made that decision, and saddened, saddened even though it was a tough decision for, for the last council at the withdrawal, but pleased to have the, the presentation this evening, the material, and look forward to, to colleagues giving consideration to our strategic planning and budgeting process going into next year. One of the highlights for me, and Counselor Love Day did, did touch on it certainly with the, with the number of events produced in the thousands, the number of jobs in the thousands, the attendees in the hundreds of thousands, and the volunteers in the, in the thousands. But one of the things was really, that stood out for me through these reports is, is the significance and magnitude that the, that the support service has for arts in the region. And, and my perspective is that it was 2.4 million dollars in, in grants that were provided to these 94 organizations, but that leveraged to 27 and a half million dollars in revenues for these organizations. And so the, the grants represented, there was a figure on the screen, I think, of 8.6%. And I guess a question to, to the presenters this evening is, have you seen, is it going, which way is it going? Is it going that the, the CRD grants that are provided are, are, are being leveraged more so, and so the percentage of, of the total revenues of the arts organizations is actually getting a little smaller because they're able to leverage or be more successful on their own? Or is it a case that due to the challenges in, in the various arts organizations that, that the grants are actually, is starting to represent a higher percentage of their, of their revenues?
I think what we're seeing historically is that public sector funding generally is either static or slightly falling. It's, it's, my observation is that it has to do with the value that our public sector funders have historically placed on culture. Organizations sort of have had to, because of that, organizations have become more resourceful. And so I think, yeah, that's part of the reason why you will see that the, the public sector level is pretty much static around the 10%, sub-10% level. You contrast that with a company like, or a country like Germany where the average public sector investment is about 84% of, of their operating. So it just, you know, it sort of speaks to what we as a society value, and, yeah, I think that's probably where it's going to be. You know, when I used to run an organization 25 years ago in the arts, the typical public sector funding level was about 30%. We used to think 30% public, 30% private, 30% self-generated. Public sector has funded less and less over the years.
Thank you, thank you for the answer. I mean, it, it just highlights that, I mean, you, you can ask yourself, where would the arts organizations and, and arts and culture be in our, in the region if, if there wasn't that 2, 2.4, 2.5 million dollars in, in granting each year? But, but another, another aspect to it is, which was brought out in the report, is that it increases the accessibility to the arts in, in the sense that one of the figures was that 80% of the grant recipients program free participatory activities for the, for the public. And when I think back to when Sydney was a member of the Arts Commission, that two organizations, one, the Sydney Lantern Festival, received a grant, and there was no admission to that. You had hundreds of, of members of our community participated in that event. I remember it well, last year in, in a, in a great summer evening. And then you take an organization like the Sydney Concert Band, which, you know, does charge for its performances, but again, it was able to, to access a grant when Sydney was a participant. And I think, again, the, the point there is I think it increases the accessibility when, when grant recipients are, are able to put on free programming for, for residents. The other is that it contributes to the, to the creativity. And then again, from the, from the progress report, 70% of the 94 organizations premiered or created new work. And, and so it's, that's, I think that's an important support to the arts and culture community when you're supporting, you know, creativity going forward. One of the questions was asked with regards to accessibility, and I noted in the report, or in the progress report, that three new grants of, of the five grants, three new grants, three of the five grants were new over the last couple of years. And has that, has those three new grants increased the accessibilities, in particularly for the smaller organizations going forward?
Yeah, it's been, I think, particularly important to generate arts activity in the, in the non-art sector. That's a relatively small program. But the equity program for sure has, I think, been the most important thing for us. It's a switch in terms of our historical and traditional programming that is sort of skewed to a certain type of programming, say, historically more traditional that we see sort of reflected in the community. It's really opened it up to a lot of organizations. It's, it's changed the way we've tried to communicate with organizations. For example, we've adjusted our, our website to make it conform with the requirements for the vision impaired. We put up ASL videos for the deaf community. So we're really trying to reach out into those communities that are historically been excluded for these systemic reasons, like how can you, how can you apply if you can't read the website, you know, in this day and age? So those things have been really important for us, both in terms of the actual applicants that have come to us, but also reputational for, you know, what we're trying to achieve in the community in terms of, you know, making it accessible to not just the, the usual expected applicants, but also for those who don't have the opportunity to, or haven't had the opportunity historically to, to get into our program. So it's been really, really important.
Thank you. One other point I'd like to touch on before, just a, a quick summary is, is Counselor Rintul spoke to, to equity and the importance of that in terms of a granting organization like this. But I think another benefit, particularly with the 19 years of experience, is the independent and professional adjudication that happens of, and through the granting process. So, I mean, Sydney Council is, is familiar, we provide an annual grant to Peninsula Arts Organization, the Arts, Community Arts Council. They do some re-granting, you know, within that organization, but I think it, it's certainly important, the experience that, that the Arts Commission have, has for, for its grant application process and its, and its adjudication experience. Just like to, to, to close commenting that, you know, our council is in, is in a process with regards to what I'll call arts policy in our community. We provide grants to, sorry, we provide grants and have for many, many years to arts facilities, but with regards to arts programs, we provide grants on an annual basis through our Small Grants in Aid Program, usually for one-off performances, organizations. Through our budget process, we, we provide a grant to an external organization, the Artsy Peninsula Arts Council, that, as I mentioned, also re-grants in some cases. And again, if, on a regional-wide basis, there is the, the CRD program. So I look forward to going into our strategic planning this fall and, and going into our budgeting process early next year to, to considering, council continuing to consider its arts policy in terms of support for the arts, both locally and regionally. And thank you again for your, both your leadership and your, of the arts organization and management. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Counselor Garnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Counselor Love Day for the presentation and Mr. Lamb for answering questions. Appreciate you taking the time. I, I as well was not on the previous council, and I'm new to all of this, but a question that does come into my mind as somebody represents the residents of Sydney and the artists who live here, prior to removing us as a, or taking the steps to take us out of the CRD for this particular branch, do you have any idea, or you may or may not be able to answer this, approximately how much in terms of percentage Sydney artists were successful in achieving or receiving grants and what those kind of dollar figures might look like?
Hmm, I know we were probably asked at the time to provide that information, and I apologize, I should have thought to look that up. I don't have that information in front of me, I'd be happy to supply it to council if I have a look at it.
Counselor Fallon? You're muted, so.
Thank you, yes. I can just say that when I did some of the research, between 2012 and 2018, Sydney's arts groups received a total of $63,875, and our total contributions from the town to the CRD Art Service between 20,000, or 29 and 2018, which was the last year we paid into the service, we put in 90,000. Does that answer your question, Counselor Garnett?
Well, that answers one of them, but that's great. No, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor O'Keefe?
You, you mentioned that, so 2.4 million in grants was handed out. I'm wondering if you can tell me what was the dollar value of the, the, the applications that you received? So trying to get a sense of, you know, does that 2.4 million represent 10% or 50% or whether, you know?
I would say broadly speaking, it represents about 50% of the overall request, that we would get.
And in terms of the, the process to allocation, you mentioned that there's a, a committee that looks at those and looks at a variety of factors. I'm wondering what weight is given to ensure some sort of equitable distribution amongst the municipalities? So is there, I presume, are they looking at the percentage of, you know, money that was contributed to ensure that each community gets an appropriate amount for their community? Is, is there, there some weighting of that at all or consideration?
Oh, sorry, there's, thanks. There isn't anything enshrined in policy related to that. I would say that on balance, the adjudication process, because it's not, because it's specifically designed not to favor large organizations versus small organizations, that there tends to be, you know, fairly balanced return. I'd say more in the project grant area, just because of the nature of the type of organization that applies to operating versus project grants, which, you know, tend to be larger versus smaller. There's more consideration given to geographic representation. Jeremy mentioned that Southern Gulf Islands and Sook have recently joined, and so given the remoteness of those organizations, there is some weight given to ensuring that funding goes to those communities.
Yeah, thank you. And just one, one more. I know that the question that people in Sydney will ask me is, you know, where are we going to get the best bang for our buck? You know, like, there's no question about the, the importance of, of arts in our community. I, I think we all agree with that. And I guess the, the question for me will be, and for our residents will be, where can we best use that money? Where will we get the most out of it? And so when I look at, so say if our assessment was, say, about 42,000, you're estimating, and then we take about 12% off of that for administrative overhead, so we're down to 37,000. And then if what we're looking at is in terms of, say, 50% of, that we might see half of that just distributed in Sydney, say, optimistically, maybe we might get 20,000. So I just, if, if you're able to provide me with any good arguments to our citizens about, you know, the value of contributing 40,000 dollars to CRD arts, rather than keeping it here on the Peninsula and distribute it to our, our folks out here, if you've got any good arguments for that, thanks.
I, I, yeah, one, I mean, one, one thing is that the amount of organizations, just a, you know, I, brief Google search of all of the different arts organizations in Sydney, there's a lot of them. And there's a lot of smaller arts organizations that aren't currently eligible that, that would be eligible to apply. Perhaps when Sydney was a member in the past, they didn't all know that they were eligible. And we need to do a better job of outreach and communications. And that's something that we, the Arts Commission has been able to do over the last couple of years since expanding the staff and having, you know, the, the documents that you've, you have in front of you, I think, indicate that, indicate the growth in that area. And so I, I think that's, that's one piece. And the other piece is supporting the regional arts ecosystem. And your, you know, your residents are volunteers of arts events that may not be happening in Sydney, they're, they attend them, they may work at those events or for those organizations. And so I, I think there is a case to be made for, for supporting it regionally and seeing how much economic activity is driven by the leveraging impact of the grants that the CRD Arts Commission has. And so I think there is, there is a, a very strong case to be made, both in terms of the return to Sydney and in terms of the regional cooperation aspect and, and that we are stronger and we work together on, on arts and many issues.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mayor McMillan Smith? You're done? Okay. Okay. Committee, are there any further questions? Seeing none, thank you for the presentation, gentlemen, and we'll move on to the next agenda item. So next on the agenda is Development Variance Permit Application Number DV100297. This is at 9805 Seaport Place, which is the Sydney Pier Hotel and Spa. And there, it's an application for a new canopy sign and fascia sign. We have a presentation by Lisa Nordstrom, who's the general manager, and you have the floor.
Okay, good evening. Thank you so much for having me, I really do appreciate it. So we have, I've applied for the application for a development variance permit for two reasons. Currently, there are fascia signs that are located on the side of the building. We've got four of them in total that have been in place since the building was built. They are a frosted glass that are attached into the stone wall, and really, excuse me, they look, they look nice, but they are not, certainly not drawing any attention to themselves. So part of the application is the fact that those are already in place, and we would like to enhance those on either side of the door. They would be lit up with push-through lighting, so just the logo and just the lettering of the sign. The remaining box would remain opaque so that we are compliant with the bylaw. The second ask is for a canopy sign outside of the Sydney Pier Hotel. Our canopy is a glass and metal, more modern canopy. I understand that the canopy law, the canopy sign law, rather, is really more in reference to the soft material ones that often have the letter, the lettering imprinted on them. And what we're asking for is to be able to put up some signage on top of the metal beam that runs along the length of that canopy. Primarily, we are usually at about an 85% occupancy throughout the summer at the Sydney Pier Hotel, and our need for signage has been minimal. We've been word of mouth and, and been able to maintain great business there. Currently with COVID and the way that it has been throughout this summer for sure, is that we're seeing an increase in walk-in traffic, people that are coming to the town, that don't necessarily have bookings ahead of time. And when you come down Beacon, there is no indicator that you can see that we are a hotel, and it's something that I think has been missing for a while, but the need is definitely there for it now. So we are applying for a permit so that we can put our lettering on top of that glass and metal canopy. The application does have some information as far as what type of lettering it will be, what it will look like, how it's attached, in hopes that we are able to drive some business from travelers that are coming into town and currently cannot designate our building as a hotel.
Okay, thank you. So I guess, does committee have any questions for the applicant? I'll start with Counselor Garnett, and then Counselor Duncan.
Thank you, Ms. Nordstrom. Yeah, I, I stood across the street. Yeah, I stood across the street the other day just to look at it, and strangely enough, I'm like, why doesn't it have a sign? It sort of popped out to me, like, because it is a residential building as well as a hotel. I could see why some people would be of the opinion, like, is it a hotel, is it not?
I have no problem with what you're asking. I just have one question, and it's just kind of the way I look at things, I guess. Where you have the sign on top of the canopy positioned, I'm just curious as to why you hadn't thought about putting it more to the left so that it kind of goes right over top of the main entranceway?
Because it's a little bit hard to tell in that picture, but the metal beam that runs across the top of that glass canopy is actually curved. So it starts out at the left, if you're standing looking at the doors, it starts out at the left, sort of recessed back. It curves out towards you as you get to the middle of the building and then curves back again towards the right-hand side of the building. If we have the lettering from the front doors and to the right, it's clearly visible from the roundabout when you come down the end of Beacon. It also is directly in front of the pullout where guests would pull up to the hotel. When they come down Beacon, it would actually, it's not facing directly towards the front of the building, it is sort of angled more towards that roundabout, simply because of the way of the shape of that metal beam that we would be attaching it to.
Okay, great, thank you.
Counselor Duncan?
Thank you. Similarly, I don't really have any problems with the application. The only question I really had was for the signs that are going to be lit, which of course is to be, you know, more eye-catching from the street, as you say, the building is quite recessed back, I mean, you kind of need something for those walk-in customers. I'm wondering, because there are the townhomes that are kind of kitty-cornered too there, I can't tell from the way it was, you know, like, would they be able to see that at night from the angle? Has that been looked at at all? Would that be something that could impact any of the neighbors or the people upstairs in the apartments that evidently have this? I guess, I guess across the street, hopefully the canopy would be enough that you can see it, but it would be across from the townhomes that I'd be most concerned about them suddenly having a light there.
So the residences that are located at the, if you're looking, standing, looking at the Sydney Pier Hotel, the residences that are located to the left and directly behind where the sign, where the proposal is for the sign, is all hallway for the hotel rooms. And then the residences on the left actually wouldn't be able to see much at all of the sign, because again, it is angled sort of more towards that roundabout. The landmark building that sits across from it, the lighting, they are illuminated plexiglass lighting, so there's no, there's no upshadow light cast from it at all. It's just, it's more like a halo lighting, so it's just a really soft lighting. There's no directional lighting that would be shining into anyone's, anyone's living rooms or bedrooms or in through their windows at all. And it is on the same level as basically the bottom-floor office building level of the landmark building. So the impact on anybody, whether it's hotel guests, pier residences, or the landmark building residences across, would be minimal to none. Thank you.
Any further questions from committee? And if not, we have a staff report with a recommendation. Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Chair. I'd move the staff recommendation that owners and tenants in occupation of property within 75 meters, 246 feet of 9805 Seaport Place be notified regarding Development Variance Application Number DV100297, to permit a canopy sign to project above a canopy, five fascia signs to be installed on one building face, and four fascia signs to be located less than 2.1 meters from the ground directly beneath, and that any written correspondence received be forwarded to council at the time of consideration of approval of the variance.
And, okay, so that's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. So Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, Chair, I was just caught unawares as we moved from the presentation to the development application we just considered. I was, I was looking through some material. I did wish to make a motion arising from the presentation if you permit. I would, I would move that, a motion that we invite the CRD Commission to submit financial information for council's consideration of rejoining the CRD Arts Service during our budget deliberations in 2021. And I'd like to speak to it after, after the motion.
You're meaning for our budget deliberations for the 2021 budget?
Yes.
Okay. And do I have a seconded?
I'll second that.
Okay, so that's moved and seconded, and recorder's clear on the motion. So speakers, I'll start with Mayor McNeil Smith and Counselor Fallon.
Thank you, Chair. This is just a motion for us to, to consider it and to, such that we can advise CRD Arts Commission that they can prepare the necessary financial information to present to staff so that we have it as part of our budget deliberations. And then I would, I would seek that we have a presentation on the financial aspects at the time of our budget deliberations, as we do with any external organization that we are considering funding to. I do appreciate that we, as a council, still have, committee and council still have discussion, still need to have discussion with regards to policy and supporting arts, both locally and regionally. And I found the information helpful this evening. One thing I would note is that if council did choose to rejoin the CRD Arts Service during budget deliberations in 2021, given the process to go through the CRD arts, we would not become members again until 2022. And I would just look to staff to confirm that, that likely process.
Yeah, I don't know the details on the process specifically, but I believe that's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Fallon, did you want to speak?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that, Mayor McNeil Smith. I was considering a similar motion. I didn't put it forward because I felt that we had heard what the approximate cost would be and that that would be enough information for council to deliberate on if that was the direction we were going. Now, having said that, I would concur that it is going to, I believe it's about a six-month process to change the bylaw so that that would be inclusive of Sydney. So yes, in fact, we would not make it, if that was council's desire to rejoin the CRD, it would not be for the 2021 tax year, it would be 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Sorry, Counselor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Chair. As part of that financial information, I'd like them to provide, if they could, information about the amounts that we contributed when we were a part of the, of the organization and what amount of grants that we received during, during that time. I think Counselor Fallon gave us a rough idea, but it would be nice to have some confirmation of what that was. And I guess I would also ask that, you know, before we march forward to put this as part of our budget deliberations, I'd really like to hear from our local arts people as well. We've heard from, you know, given the CRD this time to get, you know, their lobby for this. And I'd like to hear more from our community arts groups as to whether they think this is beneficial or not as well.
Okay, I've got Counselor Fallon and then Mayor McNeil Smith.
Thank you. Just further on to Counselor O'Keefe, the information that I gave this evening had come off the CRD website, so it is verified information. And I'd also presented council earlier this year, I believe it was one of our last meetings, either in February or in March, our last in-person meetings, with a breakdown of what arts groups received funding. I could certainly put that out again to council if that would be helpful. Thank you.
Mayor McNeil Smith? Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Counselor Fallon, and also Counselor O'Keefe for the questions for the two good, for the...
My, sorry, I've just put the mic on, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Fallon for the, and Counselor O'Keefe for the questions. And just to touch on that, with regards to information, it's certainly a reasonable request to ask for more detailed information with regards to prior town contributions and grants, and I'm certain that can be provided. I'm sorry, I'm just recalling the point I wanted to add. It was actually one of the points with regards to one of the comments by Counselor Fallon and for bringing this forward now. In addition to requesting the financial information from the Arts Council, we would also have what the, what the policies and the rules are with regards to joining the service and withdraw for the service. And while we have basically agreed not to discuss, you know, all the past and the reasons for the previous council withdrawing, it wasn't just necessarily the dollar amount in a particular year, but it were, there were changes in the rules around a municipality being part of a service. And we would receive that information in advance from CRD as well for us to consider as part of just a pure budget decision. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion to get information for, at budget time? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, okay, that's carried. And that completes our business for tonight. Is there any other business? Mayor McNeil Smith?
I motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
And seconded, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.